Call the roll. Mr. Capuzzi?
Present.
Mr. DiMillo? Mr. Fierdemondo?
Present.
Mr. Gallman? Mr. Pointon?
Here.
Mr. Riordan?
Here.
And Mr. Russo?
Here.
First item on the agenda will be the reorganization of the Planning Commission. Would someone like to nominate a candidate for chairman for 2019?
Yes, I'd like to nominate Angelo Capuzzi for chair this year.
Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
I will call the roll. Mr. Capuzzi?
Sure.
Sure, okay. Mr. Fierdemondo?
Yes.
Mr. Pointon?
Yes.
Mr. Riordan?
Yes.
Mr. Russo?
Yes.
Okay. With that, I will turn the rest of the meeting over to our new chairman, Mr. Capuzzi.
Okay, thanks, Kel. I'll accept nominations for the position of vice chairman for 2019. Any nominations?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to appoint Mr. Riordan.
You're a second?
I second the motion.
We have a... Any other nominations? Okay, we'll close nominations. Kelly? Now. Lisa, call roll, please.
Mr. Capuzzi?
Yes.
Mr. Fierdemondo?
Yes.
Mr. Pointon?
Yes.
Mr. Riordan?
Yes.
Mr. Russo?
Yes.
And I'll accept nominations for the position of secretary for the year 2019.
I'd like to nominate Chris Gallman for that position.
I'll second that.
Any other nominations? Lisa, call roll, please.
Mr. Capuzzi?
Yes.
Mr. Fierdemondo?
Yes.
Mr. Pointon?
Yes.
Mr. Riordan?
Yes.
Mr. Russo?
Yes.
Okay, I'll accept the motion to appoint Lisa F... I can't pronounce it. To the position of recording secretary or scribe for the year 2019.
I'll second that.
Any other nominations? All in favor?
Aye.
I apologize, Lisa.
No problem.
Okay. Accept the motion to set the following calendar for our meetings in 2019. Basically, they're the second and fourth Thursdays of each month, with the exception being January, July, August, November, and December. In July and August, we'll meet on the fourth Thursdays. And November, December, we'll meet on the second Thursday. Motion to adopt that calendar.
I make that such... I... Yes, I'm... Second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, and I'll make a motion that we convene our meetings at 7:30 PM.
Second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. The number two on the agenda is the... Oh, I'm sorry. We'll start a new tradition now. And I'd ask everyone to stand and join us in the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under your eye, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Our next item on the agenda is the preliminary final land development plans for the Lynnwood Elementary School for the school district of Haverford Township.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm Tom Hannan with Gilmore and Associates, civil engineer for the... Representing the school district.
Ah, is that my... Go on.
The green light is on.
The green light's on is on.
Okay. With me here tonight is Ryan Orr from KCB Architects. There's various members of the school board and staff from the school district, as well as their attorney solicitor, Andy Fremeth. So, we're here to talk about the new elementary school. Recall, we were here, I think, in November, some time ago. Since that time, we've gone through... Okay. Since that time, we've gone through several revisions and reviews with the township engineer. We submitted our plans to the county conservation district, which are still under review right now. And we've also been to the zoning hearing board and received a decision from them on a special exception for impervious surface during construction, as well as steep slope variance from them. And so, we're back to the planning commission tonight to go through the final review letter from Panoni and Associates, as well as ask for your recommendation for preliminary final approval. So, I'm happy to go through the letter, unless you have other comments you'd like to make or questions.
Yeah. There, I guess, was a revised letter that came out today?
Yes.
Have you seen that?
Yes.
Okay. And I believe there's only about eight or nine comments in that letter?
Right, there's only a handful.
Okay. Why don't you go through those real quickly?
Sure. Page one just lists the waiver requests that we're making. Page two, item one, from the shade tree commission. We met with the shade tree commission in December. And actually, they had recommended a number of trees be replanted as replacement trees for trees that we were taking down. We've shown a number of trees on the township parcel next door to the school district at their direction. And actually, the number of trees that we're showing there satisfies the number that they had requested. So, we'll note that on the plan and confirm that. But the number of trees that they're requesting are shown currently on the plan. Item two, we're requesting a waiver of curbing along Lawrence Road. Item three is a partial waiver for sidewalk. This would be for sidewalk along Lawrence Road. We have shown on the plan a five-foot-wide pathway to replace the existing pathway there. That'll be up at the top of the embankment. And the school district has accepted responsibility for maintaining that and can provide an easement to the township for public access along that. Item four, county conservation district. As I said, the plans are under review right now. Stormwater management. Item number five, there's a small calculation. I had actually provided Panoni with that calculation this afternoon, and we'll verify that with Mr. Faulkner. Item six was just a confirmation from the fire marshal that the plans are acceptable. We had met with the fire marshal and had received his comments on the plan, implemented his comments. So, it's just, again, a final verification from the fire marshal. Item number seven. This is for the connection to the existing storm sewer pipe on site. And the district's construction manager had had that pipe inspected and televised. We'll get the documentation from that and provide it to the township engineer for his records. And item eight is also will comply. We had an adjustment to one of the underground detention basins, and we're more than willing to go out and retest that area at the design elevation, so...
When would you do that retesting?
We were actually talking about doing it prior to construction, but, you know, at a minimum before the, you know, the time of construction, I think. When construction starts. We also have to test... There's another basin up here that we implemented as part of the design revisions, and we'll be retesting that prior to installation of that as well.
Okay. You want to have any questions on the board before I start asking questions? No. Okay. Where do you stand? You haven't received your variances or approvals from the zoning board yet?
Yes, we have.
You have received that?
They had a decision on January 9th.
January 9th, okay. Are those conditions of approval listed on your record plan?
At the time these plans were submitted, we had not received the decision, so we'll add those to the record plan.
Okay. I was looking through the plans real quickly, and I noticed on that record plan, you have areas designated as open space? Okay. And the district is offering those instead of paying a fee to the township, I assume?
Right.
Okay. And the district's aware that those open space areas can't be disturbed five years from now for parking, for any other use?
Right. I mean, I would think if we are changing parking, we'll be back in front of this board.
I wasn't able to find the actual outline of those open space areas on the plans. I don't know if it's a layer that inadvertently got turned off?
We can make that... That ledger.
Okay. The Delaware County Planning Commission had brought up in their review the situation which exists at the crosswalk on Lawrence Road.
Right.
There is not a curb cut or handicap ramp on the school side of that crosswalk.
Right.
I think it's important that that handicap accessibility be created at that spot.
I agree.
Okay. Also, looking at the title plan, you're proposing a couple monuments along the right-of-way line of Lawrence Road. But the dimensions from the title line in Lawrence Road to those monuments aren't noted on the plan.
Okay.
Okay, so you want to make a note of that on the record plan?
Okay.
Also, you talked about providing an easement for the walkway and accepting responsibility for the maintenance of that walkway?
Right.
Okay. So, those easements also have to be shown. And I think it would help to have a note on the record plan indicating the school district's responsibility for the maintenance of that walk.
Okay.
And then I noticed on some of the plans that you're showing what looks to be a new baseball field on township property.
Right.
Okay. But I didn't see anything in the drawings that spoke to the construction of that field.
Right. The district's committed to rebuilding that field on the township property. And so, during construction, some of that area will be used for potential laydown space. The district has talked about relocating, you know, sports teams in the meantime to accommodate that. And then that field will be rebuilt.
So, is that field going to be built after the school construction's completed or during the construction? Is there a timeframe for that?
Well, it'll be at the end of construction. It'll be completed with the end of construction. Am I correct, Ken?
So, we're working through waiting to the end of the project because the construction fence kind of limits how far the field can be built. So, we're going to wait to the end of the project. The construction fence comes down. Hopefully, lay it out so it gets as much field for everyone. It moves the baseball field closer to the school. Gives a bigger soccer field for everyone. So, that's the intent right now.
Okay. So, at some point in time, you'll have to prepare documents for the construction of that field, right?
That is correct.
And I assume that last time you were here, you spoke... There was a talk about meeting with the township to possibly use some of that area, some of the township property for like a staging area? Is that the game plan?
Yes, to...
It's off the plan. It's the dead space up top. There's no field use. There's no use there. So, we asked permission for that, and they granted us that.
As far as the contractor's staging area, it's going to be basically where that play area is in the back of the school? Are you changing the location of the staging area from where you showed it originally?
There'll be multiple staging areas around the site.
Within the construction site, will all be the staging.
We'll be staging in here. There'll be some staging back up there.
And you're confident you can make this phasing work without causing a problem during construction? You got the phasing all worked out, right?
Yes, that's correct. It is going to be a fully six-foot construction fence around the entire site to keep as much separation from the workers, construction, et cetera, from the operating school.
The... I noticed that your sanitary sewer lateral runs underneath your detention basin and your detention berm.
Yes.
Okay, below, great, okay. And that's a PVC pipe?
Yes.
Okay. You're confident that you're not going to have any problems with construction over top of that pipe when you're building your berm and doing the compacting and all that stuff?
Yeah, actually, the, like, the location of that pipe up in this area is really this shallow swell area that... The depth of that is pretty minimal. The swell at this point is...
The sanitary sewer doesn't cut across?
The sanitary sewer will cut it along the back of it.
Won't you have a pipe in place for the existing school during construction?
The existing terracotta pipe, yes.
Yeah, okay.
That remains active.
Okay, so you're confident that that's not going to... You're not going to have a problem during construction with that pipe since you're building over top of it?
No, that's going to be part of our pre-con meetings with the contractors. It's all been located videotaped, so we're going to mark it out, and they're going to have to maintain it throughout construction.
Okay. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to ask questions or have any comments about this project? Seeing none. Okay. Anybody want to make a motion? Or you want me to do it? All right. I'll make a motion that we recommend approval of the preliminary final land development plans for the Lynnwood Elementary School project to report to commissioners with the following conditions. One, that the conditions and decision of the zoning board be listed on the record plan. Two, that the limits of the open space be delineated on the record plan. Three, that the handicap, curb cut, and ramp be constructed on the south side of Lawrence Road at the location of the existing crosswalk in Lawrence Road. Four, that any missing dimensions from the title plan in regards to locations of permanent monuments be shown on the plan. Five, that the limits of the easement for the five-foot walkway along Lawrence Road, as well as notations regarding ownership and maintenance of that walkway be noted on the record plan. Six, that the details for the construction of the new baseball field on township property be prepared by the school district to the satisfaction of the township, and that that field be constructed by the school district on township property. And the last, number seven, that any outstanding comments in the Panoni review letter from January 24th, 2019 be addressed to the satisfaction of the township. And finally, that the six waivers requested by the applicant be granted by the commissioners.
I'll second that motion.
Can we have a roll call on that, Lisa, please?
Mr. Capuzzi?
Yes.
Mr. Fierdemondo?
Yes.
Mr. Pointon?
Yes.
Mr. Riordan?
Yes.
Mr. Russo?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number three is a preliminary final minor subdivision plan for Hormon Properties LLC at 1400 Elston Road. Mr. DeChico?
Mike Seidman, Panoni and Associates. Are we doing Elston first?
Yes.
I have verified mail notifications. Did I go over, Kelly? If you'd like, I could go through a brief overview of the project and then go through... We did receive comments from Panoni with a review letter. So, the project site is located at the intersection of Elston and Elston Road and Peach Lane. The site itself is about 15,000 square feet. So, we're proposing a two-lot subdivision with one new proposed home and to keep the existing house on the corner. And that house on the corner is actually operating as a two-unit apartment as it currently stands. We do have an old... And in that, we highlighted that it recognizes its two-unit apartment and that there is an adjacent lot for a single-family dwelling. But as it stands right now, Delaware County tax parcels show this as a single lot. So, we're here tonight to put that back into a two-lot configuration that's mentioned in that. I believe, Mr. Capuzzi, if you're looking at that, I think they were going for three units, and they were denied, but they recognized that it was two-unit apartment for that. So, just wanted to bring that to the planning commission's attention.
So, you're saying that the lot you're creating is actually Lot 113 in the zoning order?
It... I'm not sure. We weren't able to find the... An old configuration that showed that. But that references to another lot, single-family unit on this property, referencing back in time. So, I'm not sure that it's the exact configuration, but we are creating a single-family dwelling lot is what we're proposing to do. So, we're proposing to keep the existing house apartment unit, two apartment units, on the corner of Peach and Elston. And that lot is oversized at 9,723 square feet. The new lot proposed is 6,154 square feet. It meets the lot area and... For impervious coverage, building coverage, setbacks, and everything. We are in receipt of a review letter from Panoni Associates. And if you'd like, we could go through that review letter.
Do you have the revised letter dated the 24th?
Yes. Yes, I got that today. So, did you want to go through these number by number, or just... I mean, we're basically... We will comply.
Since this is the first time you're in, why don't you go through that?
Sure. So, there's some summary on page one. Page two starts the comments. Zoning number one. Applicant should provide documentation indicating conformity with median setback line of existing structures within 300 feet of proposed construction. We did check that. It's less than 30 feet. So, we show the minimum 30 feet on this along Elston. I think it's... I have it here. It's 27.5 feet, I believe, is the median setback. But I believe the ordinance reads it needs to be 30-foot minimum. So, we still show the 30-foot minimum. We do provide that on both Lots 1 and 2. We can provide those calculations to Mr. Faulkner. I had talked with him about this earlier today. Number two, street frontage lot with a building line. Building height should be added to the zoning table in conformity with that section. We will add that. We do comply. We're well over the 50-foot lot with requirement. We have 62 feet on Lot 2. We have 97 feet, 8 feet, on the two corners of Lot 1. Number three, no paved surface used as off-street parking or drive access may be so constructed as to exceed 25 feet, 50% of the lot, the width of the property, whichever is less. I believe that's referring to Lot 1. We were showing two separate driveway areas for the two different apartment units. I don't know if that was clear at the time when Mr. Faulkner was reviewing it, but what we could do, and what exists there today, comply with that 25-foot minimum maximum. We could, they already now have a parking area that basically is two cars wide and two cars deep. We could do the same thing and move that into the northern section of Lot 1 and have that just go there. We could meet that section. At the time, we had talked about it. It'd be clear to have it completely separate. But in order to comply with this, we can certainly do that, unless the planning commission has any other ideas on that. Number four is site distance. We'll add that. I don't foresee any issues with that. And we'll go over that with Panoni to make sure that complies. Number five, minimum right-of-way and cart rate width are 50-foot and 27-foot respectively. So, applicant should provide the minimum width or request a waiver. We'd be requesting a waiver on this. Right now, Peach Street or Peach Lane is 24.3 feet wide. Elston is 23.5 feet wide. Don't see any reason to go in and widen those roadways at this time. I mean, I don't... Unless the township has some, you know, ideas on widening in the future down the road.
Are those waivers listed on your plan?
They're not. We can add those. We will be adding those, though. All right. Number six, this is sidewalks will be required where, in the opinion of the board of commissioners, heavy pedestrian traffic will result or where pedestrian safety requires each such sidewalks. Currently, no sidewalks exist on either Peach Lane or Elston Road. So, we will be requesting a waiver from sidewalks on this. There are no sidewalks anywhere in this vicinity. So, keeping with the way the neighborhood is now, we'd like to request that waiver as well. Seven, street lighting is required. The discretion of the board of commissioners or waiver requested. In talking with Mr. Faulkner earlier today, I didn't hear of any need for a streetlight here. I guess we would be requesting a waiver from that as well, unless, again, unless the township or the planning commission thinks there's a need for a streetlight in that area.
There's none at the intersection now?
Not sure, to be honest. We have Ed Gallagher as the applicant and the builder in the audience. Do you know if there's a streetlight?
There's not one yet.
Okay.
This was as of 2012, but, you know, there's no streetlight. There's no sidewalks either on any, either side of the street.
Okay.
We're denied.
That's fine. So, we'll be requesting a waiver unless the planning commissioner or the township would like to have it, then, you know, obviously, then we would need to put it in. Number eight is a planning module. That's in process. We're putting that together. And we'll need to get approvals from all the downstream facility owners. We'll comply with that. Number nine, shade trees required to be installed near and distance 6 feet from the... Number nine, shade trees required to be installed near and distant six feet from the inside edge of the sidewalk right-of-way line. We'll add that in the plan set, add the street trees on there. And then shade tree commission should review the proposed landscaping. So, we'll, I guess to the extent that we need to go to the shade tree. I don't think we're taking any trees down here, but we are going through subdivisions. So, if we need to go shade tree, I guess we'll go to shade tree commission. Number 11, monuments are required to be provided on right-of-way lines at corners and angle points. We will provide those. That will be added to the plan. 12, the sanitary sewer main in Elston Road should be indicated on the plan. No sanitary sewer exists in Peach Lane. Subdivision may require extension of the existing sewer on Elston Road to service lot two. And finally, existing lateral for lot one and tie in those lateral and water service for lot two should also be indicated. So, the sewer and water is in Elston. There isn't in Peach. So, I was talking with Mr. Faulkner earlier today on some different options on, you know, not sure if it makes sense to do a main extension up Peach Lane to service one house and not any others. I believe the house to the north goes through a private easement through the neighbor at the center road. So, we may be looking to do the same thing if across lot one down to Elston and tie in there. Originally, we were talking about going through the right-of-way with lateral, but it was, Mr. Faulkner had brought up some concerns on having a private lateral in the right-of-way for one call and mark out purposes. So, our other idea was to put it into the lot one in easement, connect into the sewer in Elston.
Is there a water line in Peach?
There, I don't believe there's a water line in Peach.
So, you will have to extend the water main?
Water and sewer, we'd have to connect in at Elston.
I don't think Aqua will let you do what you want to do with the sewer.
Yeah, we have to work that out with Aqua. If Aqua makes us put the main up the road, then we'll put the main up the road. We would, we'd like to try and do it as an easement across lot one. To the extent that we have to extend it, we will. I think that was Mr. Faulkner's revision for this letter was some further research that he had done indicated there was no sewer in Peach. 13, drainage application and checklist are required. I thought that was submitted, but we can get that over to Mr. Faulkner for that. Infiltration test results are required to be submitted. We didn't do those yet, but we'll have those scheduled in the near future. Number 15, location of proposed electric service indicated for lot two and location of sewer, water, electric and gas services indicated for lot one. So, the existing, I'll have to go through that with Mr. Gallagher on where all the existing utilities are for lot one and get those onto the plan. We'll add it for lot two as well. Number 16, plan indicates proposed patio should be installed over a portion of the yard drain associated with the seepage bed. Unclear how runoff from the north side of the property will get into the drain without flowing over the patio. And I had talked to Mr. Gallagher about this and we're talking about lifting the patio down, out of the yard drain area to swell into that yard drain and keep it sumped in that area. And we can, we can go over that exact design with Panoni, but, you know, we can keep it from, keep the water from having to flow over top of the patio from, off of a swell and into an inlet. That makes sense. 19, if approved, grading, drainage, soil erosion, cement control point will be required for each lot. Size of topsoil stockpile, seven by 15 feet is not reasonable. We have, we own both lots. We could have room to have additional stockpile to the extent that Mr. Gallagher is going to have topsoil stockpiled there. We can show something larger to the extent that he needs it.
Does the proposed house have a basement?
Yes. I do have some pictures of some similar houses that Mr. Gallagher has done. It would be something similar to that for this lot two proposed house. 20 is BMP maintenance sewer agreement and contribution of, or, I assume, maintenance agreement for stormwater and contribution of $2,200. That's agreed. We'll submit that upon, hopefully upon future approval. 21, no existing curb may be open to serve as vehicular access for single residential property more than 12 feet for every 50 feet of street frontage. No driveway paved to width exceeding 12 feet within the public right-of-way. I think that has to do with, again, these, these here driveways and we'll be shifting these up, as I said, to more or less mimic the original configuration. I guess the only question is, and I think Chuck was going to look into this, there's a thing about 12 foot maximum width at the right-of-way, which we could neck it down to 12 feet and then widen it back out, but in a sense, based on some of the other sections that it seems to allow for up to 25 feet. There's another section that says a minimum width of 14 feet for the curb depression. So, I think Mr. Faulkner was going to look into that and we can work that out. If we need to neck down a driveway to 12 feet or 14 feet or whatever it comes to, we can do that. So, we can reconfigure to whatever your engineer comes up with is fine. 22, this is the proposed driveway alongside lot one is within 30 feet of the edge of Elston Road. Again, we're going to move this up and we'll meet that 30 feet for that comment. 23 is a benchmark elevation. Needs to be clarified. It says inconsistent with elevation on the note, so we'll clarify that. 24, applicant should verify property line bearings for northern and southern property lines of lot two. We'll, I'll get with my surveyor and have him verify and make sure we have the proper bearings on that. 25, this is the minimum longitudinal length for depressed curb. For driveway openings is 14 feet and the depressed curb detail should be updated indicate the same. We will do that. Again, we'll work with Mr. Faulkner on exactly how he wants the driveways to be configured in the final configuration there. 26 is the property should be indicated on the location plan. Must be in a layer underneath or a layer turned off. So, we'll have that fixed. So, that's the Panoni review comments. We do have, like I said, we do have some waivers we'd be requesting. Other than that, we're intending to comply with Mr. Faulkner's comments.
Rob, have any comments, Rob?
The new site plan, it does conform with the zoning regulations as far as the size of the new site?
Of the new lot?
Yeah, the new lot.
Correct.
Yes. And the setbacks?
Yes. So, the setbacks, it's 30 foot front yard, 25 foot rear yard, 12 and 8 foot side yard, 8 foot minimum, 20 foot out yard. So, we show a house kind of filling in that almost entire building envelope, but the final configuration, you can see in that plan, you're going to have some jogs and it's not just going to be a box.
Because when I saw the elevation of the picture that you showed, it doesn't seem like it works with the box. It looks like the picture is much, much longer than what's there.
Isn't that 35 feet wide? 40? It's kind of blown off for Hill Street.
Okay.
So, that's 40 foot wide. We have 41.9 feet in the front. Like I said, some of the jogs in the garage and things that might be forward a foot or two in the house setback, it would always fit within this box. And with a grading permit application, we would come in and show that exact footprint as his architect developed that.
And the existing property on the corner will be maintained as an apartment?
Correct.
Thank you.
Jesse?
So, do we, we've been talking about sidewalks a lot. There are no sidewalks on either of the streets. I guess it would, would it make much sense to have sidewalks on this? Probably, probably not, especially with all the curb cuts.
And especially, I think, because it would change the look of the neighborhood. So, if the neighborhood wants their neighborhood to stay the same, then I would see to me that the sidewalks are something that the neighborhood, the neighbors will probably not want.
Right.
I don't see, and there are newer homes that have been built in the area and they haven't been built with sidewalks.
And there's ones right across the street from Elston, one on the corner and downstream on Peach also.
Are they newer? They're not on Google Street View. Are they new, built in the last five years or so?
No, they should, they should be. They're south on Peach.
Oh, okay.
Not sure how old they are. Are they about, are they 10 or more years older? Than 10, 10 years?
Okay, I see them. Yeah, I see them.
And those are, those actually appear to be closer than 30 feet and we're proposing the full 30 feet.
Okay.
Can I ask a question about the existing house?
Sure.
That is a two apartment house?
If you want to call it an apartment.
Two family, right. Is, are they, are they, and that's the interesting thing. What I saw in your letter that you passed out said that they were, in that letter from 1967, that they were not meant to have a fire escape going up to the third floor. And yet, the picture that I'm looking at right now from Google Earth or Google Street or whatever you want to call it, shows a fire escape coming down that. Is that because there's a third unit on the third floor or something?
No, I couldn't testify. Come to your higher end of the, and I sort of.
It does go to the third floor.
Yes, it does. Just because I'm looking at it and I'm sure the thing is correct. I just was curious. I just wanted to make certain that it stays a two-unit building and doesn't become a three-unit building because in my neighborhood, that has happened four or five times and it's not fair to the other neighbors.
Ed, you're going to?
So, I want that as part of the deal, that we're going to know that that is going to be permanently no more than two units.
We could reaffirm.
It's got to be.
I mean, Mr. Gallagher, you're going to continue to own that, is that correct? And rent that?
That's right.
So, you know, he can agree to that if that's a condition?
Absolutely. I just want to make certain it's in there so that in the future, there can be no changes when the property someday changes hands because every property sooner or later changes hands.
Correct.
Are they getting a lot of people walking around there? Right now, they're walking in the street if they are. I, to be honest, I don't know. It sounds like there may be some residents here that could speak to that.
School children.
So, in other words, you're getting a lot of foot drive, but they have to walk on, in the street, is what you're telling me?
Most of them are walking on the lawn, which is a little bit bad.
Substantial. payments might be the answer.
They wouldn't. We agree?
It sounds like we have residents. Do we, does anybody from the audience like to speak about this?
Is there anyone in the audience who would like to come up and address, come up and identify yourself, give us your address and ask away?
In Everly, 105 on Center. The existing place will be rented out as single family, two single family units. And if you can't rent them out, what happens? Are they limited to the fact that they can only be used as a family, family residence? In the past, the past 20 years, it hasn't been a family home. It's been a group home. Is the township, can the township insist that that's what it is?
The township can enforce their ordinances and they can enforce the decision of the zoning board from 1967. So, whatever's permitted in the R4 district is what would be permitted on this property with the exception that the zoning board said that there could be two apartments there.
Okay. I have a few more questions. I've noticed a lot of construction and when a basement is dug out, there's not always a safe fence put around the construction site. I mean, we have plenty of animals, children, especially on Elston Road. Will something be put up so that somebody isn't accidentally running along there and falling in?
When the hole's excavated, it's already yellow.
How high, how high does that go? Okay. My other question, I had another one. When you dig that down, you know, there used to be a stream back through there and I'm sure there's still water running underground there someplace. What happens to those of us who are nearby? And a cement basement is put in and then is the water then diverted towards us, towards our homes?
One thing they will have to do is they'll have to dig some what are called infiltration tests, pits to determine, number one, one of the things they're supposed to determine is where the, any limiting zones would be, which would be high water tables, things like that. So, if there is a wet condition, it's going to limit the design and construction of their stormwater management system. So, that if there is some type of water feature there, they'll find out while they're digging.
Yeah, there is. I mean, a number of the houses originally had wells, had well water.
Okay.
So, I mean, a few of the houses still have wells in the back, not that they're used.
Yeah, I would imagine the wells go a lot deeper than this basement's going to go though.
Right. When landscaping or whatever is put in, what happens to those of us that are, I don't actually touch, I'm in the corner, sort of the diagonal, but I don't want to go out and see that my backyard now is flooded.
Well, they, they have to have a stormwater management plan in place before they can pull permits. That's one of the things that the township is pretty diligent on as far as making sure they don't create water runoff problems for adjacent properties.
Okay, good. Thank you. Thank you. Before we get to the next person, this meeting's being filmed and if you're not speaking into a microphone, no one can hear you. So, that entire conversation, there's going to be a whole lot of questions and no answers. So, if you could, want to steal one of the microphones up the front or however you want to, guys want to work that out.
Do we, do we have a handheld mic?
Do not.
Is that something on the agenda? I mean, be helpful. Okay, I'll talk louder and talk closer to the mic.
Well, it wasn't necessarily about, it was about speaking from the audience.
All right. Anyone else from the neighborhood who'd like to speak? Yes, sir?
Ryan Ramona. I live on, technically, my address is 14 North Hellfield, which faces the other way, but my driveway comes back onto Peach near the intersection of Elston. I had a question regarding, and this may be the wrong forum for it, but to my understanding, the existing property was zoned institutional. So, if that is the case, is it zoned properly to be a multi-family residence?
As far as the township records, as far as I know, it's zoned residential R4.
Okay, because I concur with the previous speaker. It was a group home for many years. Okay, 'cause I, I concur with the previous speaker. It was a group home for many years, and it's been vacant for, I'm not even sure how long. Over the last twelve months, I've noticed there's been a significant amount of demolition done inside the property, but there has been no, there's been nobody living there. It hasn't, it's been vacant. It, it's so you're, my understanding is, it's not rented yet, but the intention is to upgrade the property so that it would be? Is that?
Yes, that's correct. Upgrade the property and fix it up, bring it up to code and fill it with a family.
Okay. The other, the other issue is traffic, and this also may not be the best venue, but those of us who live on Peach and Elston, we more or less call it the Peach-Elston Speedway in the morning and the afternoon, because of everybody trying to avoid the traffic on Township Line, trying to get to Vermont. And I know that we see it every day where that stop sign is an optional one, apparently, for most drivers. They generally don't deal with having to stop in that area.
Where is the stop sign? At the intersection?
There is a stop sign at the intersection of going up Peach. There's actually stop signs on Peach. There's not a stop sign on Elston coming onto Peach, but there is a stop sign both ways on Peach. So, this will add, certainly will add some traffic. Will also add the parking issues, 'cause you mentioned the, the width of the lot, of the streets. There are people who park because of the doctor at the bottom of the street of Peach. There's a doctor, a pediatrician, down at the corner of Township Line and Peach. There are, we, we, several years ago, they did change the parking on the, I guess that would be technically the east side of Peach, to be one hour only during the day to allow the pediatrician to have parking spaces. But that's, you know, what, if you start to get a whole bunch of other cars on that street, you combine that with the schoolchildren that are walking, and the flow of traffic that, literally, I, I could show you videos from my phone of a guy who's going sixty miles an hour up the street through the stop line because they want to beat that light. So, I'm, I'm concerned that the additional traffic could be a problem.
As far as the, you know, speeding and things like that, obviously, there's nothing that this board can do about that. But you, you know, you can always contact the police department. There is a public safety officer also that, that might be interested in helping you out.
Yeah.
If you, if you have, you know, concerns about traffic in that regards. As far as the parking goes, Township Code requires two parking spaces for each family unit, and apparently, the, the applicant is, is abiding by that regulation.
If, if I could, we're actually have a two-car garage and two parking spaces in the, in the driveway. So, we have four spaces for the new house.
So, this lot that you're gonna build on is where that parking, that parking lot is now. Essentially, that's going away. So, you're relocating that?
Relocating that same dress, yes.
Down toward, closer to the existing structure?
Correct. So, there'll be four more spaces down there, and there'll be four spaces for the new lot. Only required two, but we're providing four.
Doesn't seem like it's a big enough lot for that many cars, but I don't know. You've measured it, and I haven't, so, thank you.
Thank you. Thanks. Anyone else? I see movement.
Nick Karamanico. I live right next door.
Hi, Nick.
Nick Karamanico, 108 Peach Lane. So, I'm literally right next to the property. So, I, I guess I'm, I'm asking the board, how, what's the approval process? When do you approve? When do you, next steps?
All right. What, what happens is, the planning commission will make a recommendation to the Board of Commissioners as to whether or not we think the plan should be approved, assuming, regardless of what we think, it's up to the Board of Commissioners to make the final approval. They have the authority to approve or deny. And the applicant is asking, since this is what's considered a minor subdivision, he's asking that a, the plan be considered as a preliminary and final, so it's a one-shot deal. So, once it gets through this board, we're done with it. It doesn't come back to us like the school district beforehand. They were here three or four times, so. So, that's, that's the process, and, and it usually moves forward pretty quickly, depending upon the issues involved in the, in the application.
Okay, thank you. I'll say initially, I, I don't have a problem with the house next to mine. I just want to make sure that the, the original house continues in the, in the format that it's supposed to be. If it's a two, two, two-family dwelling, then, then that's kinda what I'm gonna make sure. Okay?
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Yes, sir?
Mark McCarty, 1209 Elston Road. The new homes that were put on Peach Lane, I, up until ten years ago, I never had a problem with water in my basement. I have a problem with water in my basement. I had to put a sump pump in, French drain and whatnot. And I understand that you guys have the storm management system and everything, and that they displaced it, did everything they were supposed to do. I looked at those drawings. I was fine with that. But the elevation of where this house is gonna go up the hill, and now projected to come down Elston Road, I'm gonna have more water coming down the street, correct?
I, I'm not familiar with the topography of the area. I assume that you're saying Elston flows from Peach to the west?
No, from Peach down to the, the south.
To the south, okay.
Okay. That's, one of my concerns is, is the stormwater management is, is a huge part of it. The other part's gonna be, is the sanitary lines, okay? That's at a higher elevation.
Mm-hmm.
And on Elston Road, and I wasn't there when the first, that first line went in, but they used to have sanitary back up into their basements along that, that stretch of road there. We're at a higher elevation now, and you're gonna force sanitary down that line. What's to stop it from coming into my house, then?
You're supposed to have a backflow, you're supposed to have a backflow preventer per Township Code?
Not on the sanitary line.
Yeah.
Okay.
That's, I mean, if you have that type of problem, that's your solution, you know, individually.
Would be a gated, yeah.
I just had one out at my house.
Yeah, okay.
And believe it or not, the approval process that they have to go through to get a additional sanitary sewer connection is quite involved, and one of the things they have to determine is to whether or not the sewer lines that they're connecting to have adequate capacity for the additional flow.
Yeah.
And, you know, ninety-nine times out of a hundred, they're gonna, they're gonna get the answer, yeah, you can fit in one more house.
And then the last thing was, is about the trees and everything on the property. Over the last eighteen months, most of those trees have been taken down on that property.
Okay.
To say that there's nothing there, there was trees there. They were taken down. So, to say you're not gonna put any trees back up is like, kinda hurtful.
They, they had to put trees in. There's a requirement to add shade trees, but they don't have to replace every tree that was taken down if it's not there now.
Well, not there now based on the last eighteen months.
We can only react to the plans that are presented. If there's trees that were taken down illegally, that's another question, but property owners have the right to maintain their, their trees on their property.
Maintain them? Like, not take them down?
Well, if they're diseased, they have a right to take them down.
All right. It just seems like it's a little presumptuous to say, I'm not putting any trees up.
Now, I don't know that he's saying that, but-
No, but for clarification purposes, we just took possession of the property like November thirtieth, so I have no control of what the previous owner-
And, and, and somebody had mentioned-
Continued to do.
Yeah, somebody had mentioned that we, we were under, the understanding that this was actually a state-owned property, because of the group home.
Oh, okay.
Okay. So, this is like, kinda all-new to us that this is, and no one has actually lived there since it has not been a state home over the last eight years.
It's been vacant for eight years?
It's been empty for eight years.
Okay, five years.
Been a long time.
So, I can imagine what condition the house is in.
I'm hoping Mr. Gallagher's doing improvements that'll bring it up to code and make it affordable and usable for potential renters. Thank you.
Thanks.
Anyone else? Okay. Personally, I haven't commented on this, but I have concerns about some of the issues that were raised in the Township Engineers' letter, specifically the sanitary sewer connection. I don't know that I'm on board with constructing a lateral cro, furnishment across a private property. And given the fact that this is a, supposed to be a minor subdivision application, and we have twenty-six comments, I think that's a little bit more than, than we need to consider for, for approval at this point. What I'd like to have done is the applicant revise their plans, address all the comments in the, in the letter, get the infiltration, infiltration testing done, and then, in response to the request for waivers, give us a reason why you think you deserve the waiver. I know in the past, we've kind of granted waivers offhand, but I think if you read the code, it does say that, you know, to grant a waiver, there has to be a compelling reason for why it should be granted. So, in your response letter, Mike, if you could just address the reasons for your waiver requests, and make sure all those requests are on your plan. It's not fair to us to find out at the eleventh hour that you need all these waivers.
We'll do that. When we revise the plans, we'll, we'll come back after Penoni reviews them again. Hopefully, have a clean letter for you.
Thank you. And since there is no, I got the sense that there is no light at the intersection, maybe this is a good opportunity to install one.
Talking about streetlights.
Yes.
And we're looking at it, there isn't.
Okay. You're looking online?
Well, but, I mean, I have to say, as of April 2012, so unless they installed one since then.
We'll take a look.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Gallagher.
Can we find out one thing? I don't, I still don't like it with, I don't have a slide. If it will be.
Exactly. And we're looking at the whole thing here. There's no sidewalks. We're in blocks.
Okay, moving right along.
Can I ask one more question?
Yes.
If, if they have to make adjustments and these waivers and come back, do we get invited back again by certified mail?
No. Every meeting is open to the public. But check the, check the Township's website, and all our meetings are listed with the agendas. So, I suspect they'll be back probably the fourth week in February, Thursday in February. And that was Mrs. Everly, Everly?
Yes.
That was speaking. Thank you.
And for your information, that would be on the 28th of February, if that would be the case here, 14th to the 28th. And I would doubt that everything will be done in two weeks, period. And check. You can even call Kelly Kirk at Planning Township, she can give you information.
Item number four is a preliminary, final, minor subdivision plan for Ormond Properties LLC at 1417 Fairview Road. And it looks like we had the same cast of the characters.
Again, Mike Cieco with Catania Engineering, here representing Ormond Properties LLC. Ed Gallagher is in the audience as well, as the, as the builder. This project site here is also a two-lot subdivision. There's, on Fairview Avenue. It's 1417 Fairview Avenue is the existing address of the existing house. The existing house is proposed to be torn down, a new lot line added into the property, two lots and two new single-family links. Lot area is almost an acre. It's forty-two thousand square feet. So, we're proposing two lots. One, Lot One, on the left-hand side of the plan, that you're looking, the western side, is twenty-five thousand five hundred square feet, and Lot Two is sixteen thousand five hundred square feet. It's in the R4 residential district, only requires six thousand square feet. So, we're well oversized for this proposal and subdivision. Lot One, as you can see, we have, where dotted areas are, it's steep slopes. It's not very, there's no very steep slopes. Those are steep slopes, and, and they are just a bit above fifteen percent on those, so it does qualify. We're proposing not to disturb any of those steep slopes. I did talk with Mr. Faulkner today, and he suggested that maybe, it may more, make more sense, give us a little more room. If we did disturb some steep slopes within the regulations that allow it, we're allowed up to fifteen percent of disturbance, we're not necessarily allowed to have a house in the steep slopes, which we wouldn't, but it could give us a little more room in the back of the property of, of Lot One, to, to put in the corner of the house and, and the seepage bed, without having to have a fence right up against where we're trying to, to work. So, we did talk with him about that, and I think that's one of his comments in the review letter that we'll go over next.
Yeah, so you're saying these are all fifteen to twenty-five percent slopes?
Yes.
Okay.
I mean, that's kind of the, 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 the basic overview. We are proposing stormwater management, and street trees are proposed along Fairview Avenue. I do have, again, some more houses. You can see for Lot One, for Lot Two, similar houses that he's built, that he's gonna propose in similar manner on these, these two, two lots. We are in receipt of a review letter from Associates, again, through comment-by-comment as well.
Uh, yeah.
So, once, again, there's some summary on page one. Page two starts with number one, zoning. Applicants should provide documentation with a median setback line. This, this was checked, and median setback is thirty feet, and that's what we're, we're actually proposing thirty feet for Lot One. And then, Lot Two, we're proposing to step it back to thirty-five feet, because the house next door is closer to forty or so feet. So, we're more like, kind of stepping back the houses so that it makes kind of a tapered line back towards that house, instead of having two closer and then one back further.
How about the houses to the west? At least on the Google Earth, it looked like they sat pretty far back.
There's, yeah, there's a couple that are further back over to the west. I think that go towards Forest. They're closer towards Fairview. Median setback, and those all up and again, I can submit the calculations to, they're on that, but, you know, we came to thirty feet for that, on that. So, those, those ones that are further back, they are, you know, they are fur, they are much further, but it's not an average, it's the median.
Right.
So, it does work out based on these other houses that are closer as you go towards Forest Avenue.
Okay.
All right. So, we'll provide those calculations for that. Two, street frontage lot width, building line and building height added to the zoning table. Again, we'll comply. These lots are well oversized. You have eighty-five feet a lot width on, on Lot One, fifty-five feet a lot width on Lot Two, so we're above the, the minimum requirements for that, and we'll, we'll add that to the plan. Three, front yard setbacks should be indicated on Sheet One, I thought it was. To the extent that that needs to be clarified, we can do that. Number four, posed total impervious area for Lot Two appears to be inconsistent with the areas indicated on the plan. Additionally, building coverage for both lots should be properly indicated. We'll clarify that with Mr. Faulkner. I'm not sure if he's talking about stormwater calculations versus this, or whatnot, but we'll, we will clarify that, verify that. Number five is site distance. Add it to the plans. We will add that and verify those. Number six, six, seven, and eight, or six, seven, eight, and nine, or, again, waivers that we'll, I'll go through with you now, that, they weren't listed on the plan, my apologies, but we would be requesting them. The six is the minimum required cartway is twenty-seven feet. Fairview is at twenty-one point four feet wide, western side, twenty-two point eight feet fi, eight feet wide on the eastern side. We're proposing to keep that the same. There's been a number of houses on this, on Fairview, with, with the similar development is what we're proposing here. Number seven is sidewalks. Again, where we require, where in the opinion of Board of Commissioners, heavy pedestrian- Again, where we require, where in the opinion of Board of Commissioners, heavy pedestrian traffic will result. There's no sidewalks on Fairview again. We will be requesting a waiver from that. There were a number of other houses that were put on here without sidewalks. So, but we'll, in, in the same request from the other plan, we'll, we can provide a list of reasonings for, for the waiver requests. Number eight, street lighting is required at discretion of Board of Commissioners where waivers should be requested. Again, I don't know to the amount that this needs a streetlight. I guess we could look into that and see to that extent, and we'll probably, we'll probably request a waiver, but unless the township is looking for a streetlight in that area.
Well, you, if you're going to ask for a waiver, then you give us your reasoning or why you think the waiver's legitimate, and then we'll evaluate your request.
We'll take a visit to the site and, and see what's, what's around the area, and we can, we can get, get that to you. Nine is, is about the curb. New curb should be concrete or granite. The existing curb is bituminous. We were proposing to keep it bituminous, leave it the way that it is to the extent that we put a driveway in, we've repaired or replaced any of that bituminous in that area. He's indicating that that will be a waiver. We, we've done some other houses on Fairview and have done the same thing. It was approved, so we'd ask for the same consideration.
Hey, Cal?
Yes?
What, what's the township? I know when you sell a house in the township, someone from goes, is it comes out, or is it the building department comes out, checks the curb?
For you to have.
And what is, what they usually do in the case of someone who has a bituminous curb?
They're allowed to place, replace like with like.
Like with like?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
That would be our same proposal here. Number 10 is the planning module for this, for sewage facilities. We'll be submitting for that, and we'll request approval from DEP upon approval from all the downstream facilities. Number 11, notes tree replacement requirements. We are taking trees down on this property. I believe most of them, all of them are within the, the, the area that's not tree protection zone because it's within the area, the building footprint, or within, I think it's 16 feet of the building footprint. And Mr. Faulkner brings up, and we can make some changes to this. There are some utilities that run through one of the existing street trees, and we're going to reroute these around. We'll have to talk with the Shade Tree Commission about where we, we can take credit for saving an existing tree and not planting a new tree, you know, right next to it, essentially. But we can work that out with Shade Tree. There's also, I guess, a roof drain that comes close to or right, right by a existing tree in the back. We could look at rerouting some of that and keeping that away from it. So we, we can work with that, and we'll, we'll go to Shade Tree. I guess we'll have to talk with Shade Tree Commission on, you know, what additional, if any, trees need to be planted for that.
When you, when you show your trees on the plan, you're not really, it's not a realistic depiction of their, say, canopy or anything like that, right?
It's a, it's a symbol, is what we're showing. We do show the, the size of the, the caliber of the tree.
You show the size, but the, I mean, the root system is generally thought to extend to the canopy of a tree, and you have some trees that are right up against the edge of your seepage bed. There's no way, even though the trunk may be out of the seepage bed itself, you're going to be destroying the root system for those reasons. I think you need to be a little more realistic in your depiction of the tree removal in regards to how construction is going to affect the root systems.
Yeah, well, we, we can do that, and we'll, you know, and I said, like I said, we can work that out with Shade Tree on the, the trees that are going to come out and whatever replacement that we need to do. I was, I was talking with Mr. Gallagher about reconfiguring some of these, some of these areas to try and save those trees.
I just got to ask you, if we, we keep track of this stuff when houses are built? If a tree is supposed to be saved and it comes down, does that trigger some type of additional tree planting?
That's mostly handled by code enforcement. Director Josilia is liaison for the Shade Tree Commission, and also is usually involved in, in the inspections for the houses. So he usually has a pretty good handle of what's supposed to be there, what's supposed to be planted, as well as, you know, for, you know, our inspections and maintaining what was proposed on the plan versus what was built.
Okay, so someone from the township is checking to make sure that only the trees that are supposed to come down, come down?
Within reason. I mean, you know, accidents happen, but, but yes, if there's, you know, some major discrepancies, that's clearly problematic.
Okay, thanks.
Electricity above or below ground?
Coming in? I believe it's below ground. The new, new developments require.
Is that in conduit, or is it just direct burial?
I don't, I don't get involved in that usually. I'm not, I'm not sure how that usually works. We just put the note on the plan that it's supposed to be underground.
Electric service. Underground, it should be a conduit of some kind.
Pico normally, infra source for Pico will come out and install.
It's only come so far.
They run it from the pole through the property. You have to just supply them with a trench, and then they screen it in and put the caution tape on top. So I think it's direct burial, like a three-wire, but they encase it with screenings below and on top, and then they put like the caution, high voltage below. That's my experience.
You're only coming in with what, 120, 1, or you have 240?
Yes, they've got 240, and then.
You're only coming in with single phase?
Right.
Usually that would be in conduit if it was coming in. I mean, the way I've dealt with Pico, they usually put it in conduit.
I just, I just make the application for the service a meter, and then they contract out through the for source or denella.
They hook it in with a meter, and then you take it from there.
Yes, exactly.
So, I mean, whatever Pico requires, we're going to do.
Right.
Underground for that, so. And then 12, shade trees are required to be installed minimum six feet from the inside edge of the right-of-way. We do show it six feet in. I had talked to Chuck about that. Said maybe out of note that just calls that out, that it is six feet. We're just showing that way. So we'll clarify that. 13 is the Shade Tree Commission should review landscaping and tree replacements. We already said we're, we're going to go and talk to them about that and, and get them to review that. 14 is monuments are required on right-of-way lines at corners and angle points, so we'll, we'll add those onto the plan as well. 15, drainage plan application and checklist are required. We'll, again, I thought that was submitted, but we'll, we'll get those over to Panoni and to Mr. Faulkner for his review. 16, infiltration tests are required. We did not do those yet, but we'll schedule those probably at the same time we're doing the Elston ones. And for that, we'll, we'll get those results over to you and to Mr. Faulkner. 17, I touched on this already to a brief extent, but the limited disturbance for lot one, Mr. Faulkner is pointing out, does not provide adequate room to construct improvements at the rear of the lot for the seepage bed in the corner of the proposed house. They come close to the, the limited disturbance line, so, and it's, it was done that way to try and stay out of the steep slopes. But to the extent, like I said, we're allowed to disturb up to 15% of steep slopes for the development, we just can't put the house in the steep slopes. So we will, we'll move that limited disturbance line to, you know, to accommodate, you know, an easier installation of the house and the seepage bed. 18, oil erosion sediment control should be located within the limited disturbance. I, I guess there's, some of the limited disturbance line is slightly offset from the, the silk fence. We'll move the silk fence right against the, the limited disturbance line or vice versa. So it's right, right on it. I think there's a slight offset, I think, on one of these silk fences, offset from the limited disturbance line, so we'll, we'll clarify that and get that, get that done. 19, additional spot elevation should be provided along the shared property boundary to verify runoff is directed to the proposed seepage bed for lot two. Just to make sure that the swale takes that into the, into the, the seepage bed as proposed, we'll, we'll add the additional spot elevation. 20 is just noting if a grade, if, if approved, a grading drains and soil erosion sediment control permit will be required for each lot, and we will do that. 21 is a BMP stormwater maintenance agreement should be executed in contribution of $2,200 per lot made to the Township Stormwater Control and BMP Operation Maintenance Fund. We're agreeable to that. It's part of the standard operating procedure for any of these new lots or new homes. Number 22, again, this is the minimum longitudinal length of depressed curb for private driveway is 14 feet. The detail should be updated. I don't think it listed the width, so we'll, we'll add that minimum width of 14 feet. 23, applicant information indicated on the plan should be consistent with land development application. I'm not sure to what extent that, that was, Chuck. Is that Ormond Properties versus?
Yes. So in your lower right-hand corner, you just need to revise.
Okay, there's, yeah, okay. There was, yeah, there's a typo in there that the old, the old applicant, or previous applicant name was GMG Holdings, but it's not. That wasn't correct. But I believe all the paperwork submitted to the township was under Ormond Properties. That's why it's listed as such. So we'll, we'll clarify that.
Back, back to the driveway width? I think it did, did list 20-foot driveway, so you'll do 14, neck down to 14, and then widen to 20, is that?
Well, this, so that section is a minimum, it's a minimum width of 14 feet, not a maximum.
Yeah, I know. I think this is where that.
Minimum, okay.
24.
Before you do that.
Go ahead.
Is it a minimum width that you're looking for or a maximum width?
So there's a few discrepancies in our code about the width of driveways. The, what is cut out on that, that item of the letter is the minimum width of the depressed curb in our design standards. However, in 157 Streets and Sidewalks, a provision was added back in 2001 that driveways may only be 12 feet wide at the, at the street. And then our zoning code has a maximum width of 25. So it's something that we need to discuss because obviously the 14-feet minimum and the 12-foot maximum in different sections of the code is problematic.
Thank you. Whatever's decided, I guess, between the township officials and consultants, we'll, we'll make the change based on what, you know, what it is. I mean, we'd like to keep it, you know, the double with what, all the way out.
It sounds to me like probably this is something that we will have to address and get back together with the Board of Commissioners and tighten up, is what you're saying?
Eventually, yes, absolutely. But for now, as it's not part of the zoning code, and we do require two off-street parking spaces per, per unit, I would suggest possibly a waiver in lieu of being able to meet the minimum or the maximum 12-foot width.
Thank you. 25 is the applicant should confirm sanitary sewer lateral location for lot one. We were proposing to reuse the existing sanitary lateral for, from the existing house for lot one. The way that lays out on the plan is that it comes in, if I didn't, if we don't move it at all or jog it around, it comes in under the garage. So I'll have to talk with, I haven't gotten through that with Mr. Gallagher yet to whether he wants to do that or move, or, or take it at the street or near the street and jog it around the driveway and outside of the garage. So that, that's what Mr. Faulkner is referring to. So we'll, we'll clarify that if he's going to continue to, you know, use that. There are, there is some language that needs to be added to the plan about verifying the adequacy of the existing sanitary lateral and its connection into the main. So we'll, we'll do, we'll, we'll do those things. And that's, brings us to number 26, which is when four or more openings or one continuous opening have been made within 100 linear feet of pavement, permit shall overlay traffic lanes in which the opening was made for your entire length of highway between the ends of the furthest openings made in a manner authorized by Department of Public Works. Extensive overlay should be indicated on the drawing. So we are, we are doing a number of underground openings, so we'll, we'll have to add that. We'll, we'll show that on the plan, the, that overlay. 27, and this is what I just mentioned, when an existing sewer lateral is available for reuse subsequent to demolition or removal of previously existing building, the lateral may be reused provided it is inspected by the township engineer and found to be adequate in terms of infiltration, inflow, and general conditions. The note should be out of the plan, so we'll, we will add that, add that note, and that will be done. And that's the end of the review letter. Planning Commission have any other questions or comments?
Rob, you have any comments?
I think you did address the issue with the sewer line going under the garage. Notice the water line is also going under the garage on the side on lot one.
Rob, could you move your mic?
Sorry. Yeah. The water line, the existing water line came in over in that location. So again, I mean, we, you can do that. Some, some builders don't like to do that. I don't know to the extent of, Ed, you've looked at that at all yet, but, you know, we, we may be taking that and either bringing it in further past the garage or into the front of the house to keep it out of, out of that garage area. A lot of, a lot of times, we do do that.
That was, that was all I saw. Thank you.
Is the current home occupied?
I'll defer to Mr. Gallagher. Is that?
It's vacant.
The answer was that it's vacant.
I, I just, it's just a matter of, of, one of the, one of the things that I have noticed over the past five to 10 years on the commission is that all the things that Panoni Associates in our township require are consistent. Where every single time, we know that all of these things need to be done, and it always amazes me that we continue to get applications where the basic things that we know we want to have should be, have, should have been completed before you get here so that you don't have to go through 27 items. And I'd love to see if we could find a way to, to get Mr. Faulkner's comments down to 10 to 15 in the future. And what I would suggest is, is that somehow or other, there's a communication between the township engineers and the engineers who appear here, and you're not the only one by any stretch, Mike. I'm not going after you specifically, but I'm saying I'd like to see people tighten these things up a little bit so that, so that it's, it's not so redundant.
Understood. Thank you.
Joe, you have any comments? No more?
I'm good. That's a theoretical.
Yeah. My, my biggest concern is the fact that we're squeezing these houses into an area, and the only thing left on the site are steep slopes. So anybody moves in those two houses, if they want to put a pool in, put swing sets up for their kids, whatever they want to do in their backyards, they want to have to come to the township and ask for variance. And by approving lots like this, we're kind of giving them an excuse. It's, I mean, it's a built-in hardship, in my opinion. Someone comes in, buys this lot, says, well, gee, I can't build anywhere else on my lot because it's nothing but steep slopes. Because we approved a subdivision that is nothing but the predominant feature on the lots are steep slopes. And unfortunately, you know, there's nothing our audience says about how much of a lot area has to be buildable, has to be clear of steep slopes or anything like that. So I'm just expressing a concern that I have about the person who has to buy these homes and is kind of boxed in as to whatever they can do in the future. Anyhow, that's my main comment. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak? Yes, sir.
Good evening. I'm Nick DiTrolli. I'm at 1420 Parks Hive Drive. My house is directly behind this property, and I agree with you, especially on Fairview. That, Fairview anymore now is so packed, you can't get a car up that driveway. But that's not why I'm here. There's other people here that are going to complain about that. There's other people here that are going to complain about that. What I would like to talk about, you guys talked about the trees that were on the property, and you're disappointed in taking them down. But there's evergreens on the back of the property that are all diseased. The last year, two of them came down, and of course, they don't fall that way. They fall on us. And we lost vinyl fences, and we lost sheds. And the rebains, when they came down the last time, promised them that these trees would be removed. And I don't see it on the map that they were taken into consideration. So if you could take that into consideration, I'd appreciate it.
So your concern is the viability of the existing trees at the rear of the property?
Yes. They're all diseased. And here's a picture of it, if you guys want to see it. Come on.
I'm not an attorney, but I had a situation like this happen to a good friend of mine. And I will tell you that a certified letter to the owner sent to him and demanding that those trees being taken care of, it no longer becomes the problem of you because when a tree falls on your property, whether anybody knows it, that tree then becomes their property and their concern and their insurance company's problems. But if you send a certified letter to the owner, from that time on, his insurance company and his, his, that is considered to be a clear and present, it's a danger. And so because that dangerous condition exists, okay, they can then, if they don't take those trees down, there is, they have a mortgage, they have other stuff involved. None of that stuff, all those people are also going to be liable. So if you send that a letter to anybody who ever wants to, sends a letter to somebody because of that, we'll get the township to come out and take a look at the trees and declare them to be dangerous, then they were given so many days to take them down. And that's whether or not they build two houses there, leave the present house, do anything. That is a totally separate issue, but you do have regress.
Okay. So about six months ago, we did do that, and the township never came out. And we were under the impression that the township has to come out to look at them before we can send the certified letter. And they haven't come out yet. So I know you're busy.
No, that's.
Who do we call? Township manager?
Yeah, I would call the township manager.
You could. I, to be honest, I'm not 100% sure. I would start with Public Works Department. And they can probably, if they're not the right people, they can direct you to.
So that's, that's where we called, Public Works.
It's either, it's either Public Works or Codes.
And of course, you know, so they, they never came out.
If it were me, I would call my township commissioner.
Okay.
Tell him about the problem, and he will help you find the right individual because that happened to the house that I present live in, presently live in, and the owner next door was required to do $11,000 worth of tree work, okay, because the township came in and had him do it. And they really did do it, and they did it within 60 or 70 days. It was all done. So, and that was all done because Mr. Lewis was able to step in and talk to him. So your township commissioner, that's one of the things that.
Oh, I appreciate that, but, you know, instead of going through all that, can we just ask Mr. Gallagher to just take them down?
Certainly could.
Would you like to see them? Oh, you don't own the property yet? Does Rebain still own the property? In fact, I don't know his name. This is my property. This is our fence. And of course, it goes all the way across. There's three properties, mine, my neighbor's, and the neighbor in front of it. This one here is actually, is ready to be blown over onto this neighbor's property already, so.
Obviously, any, any deals that you can work out directly with the property owner is fine.
Yeah, I mean, as I said, we don't presently own the property, so I'm in no place to say I could take them down. But I will tell you that I'll work with you and take the dead ones down, the ones that are leaving, if we proceed forward with this project. The only thing I would ask is if in good, because it's so far out of the building envelope, if in good nature of compromise that we help you out, that wouldn't count against us and the shade tree commission.
The dead tree, it shouldn't count.
Yeah, if they're diseased trees, you're not responsible for replacing diseased trees.
I'm amenable to that, yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hi, Don Bonnich, 1432 Parkside Drive. Just wanted to talk about, on Fairview, they've put numerous new houses on Fairview over the last few years. The street is very narrow. I'm concerned about every new house that comes in on street, people park on the street. I know there's driveways with the houses, but all the new houses have younger people. There's more than two cars. It boxes in the driveway, they park in the street. That part of the street, as you're coming up the hill on Fairview, is very tight. There's a lot more people walking on that street now because down at Murray Place, they put the walking trail, they put the skateboard park. I've come up there at night coming home from work. Kids are riding their bikes, kids are walking, people are walking their dogs down to the, it's pretty dangerous. Pavements, I think, are an issue. I know it's only two houses. At some point, I thought that should have been addressed with all the other houses. That's my big concern, is the pavements with the width of the street. It's just, and we're parking on the street, that you only have one lane to get up.
The township does require a certain cartway width, which is the width of the roadway, and they require curbs and sidewalks also. And one of the things that they're asking, or some of the things they're asking for are waivers from having to do that, but they have to provide a justification on why they should. So they'll provide that justification, and we as a board have to review that justification.
I guess I just didn't understand, because on Parkside, we're a little cul-de-sac street.
Right.
For some reason, we all have pavements that go out to these, all these new homes, and they don't have pavements. It's just, it was just a little weird, and just wanted to bring that to your attention that safety of, there's a lot more people walking there than 15 years ago because they've added more stuff down at Murray Place.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Hi, my name is Rayland Harmon. I'm at 1413 Fairview Avenue, right next to the property. And that was going to be my first comment, is that right now, since we have parking on that side of the street, when you come up over that hill, you have to give your car some gas to get up and over that hill, especially during the winter. And you could only go in the left lane, even though that's not the lane you should be in. So you can't, there's no way to have visibility very far at the top of that hill until you get over it. And God help us if there's kids riding bikes and people getting in and out of their cars. It's become, it's only a matter of time, I think, before there's something serious. So I don't know what the answer is, but is there definitely two widths parking for each of these properties? Two space, like in the driveway, two width?
There's, there's two parking spaces in the driveway, and then each house has a garage also.
Yeah, good. Well, anyways, I mean, I have two young adults live in my house, so I know what it's like to have more than two cars in the driveway. The other thing is, I was wondering if the builder had plans to put any of these screening type of trees along the property line. When the house on the other side of us was built, I believe that's 14, I'm 13, that's probably 1409. The builder put in, I can't remember the name of the type, those tall skinny trees?
Arbiviti.
Thank you. So now they've grown into our property, and the roots have grown underneath my vegetable bed and driveway. So I don't, and actually, the owners would like to take at least one down because they've gotten so out of control. But, so I was just wondering, I really hope there's nothing added right along the property line on the other side.
Yeah, the only requirement is that there's a tree replacement formula. If you take down a viable tree, then you have to replace it, and there's a formula. There's also shade trees that have to be put along the street, but there's no requirement to do landscape screening or anything like that, other than, you know, personal preference, if you will.
I'm at 1413, so I'm the superbonia. So we're here.
I give on the other side.
Yes, and this is Mr.
Turn that around.
Just to clarify your question, if you do not want any screenings such as arbivities or cypresses, we'll be more than happy to oblige.
Yeah. Thank you. No, just, there's, I, I'm a very avid gardener, and something I shared with the Rebains who used to live at that property, so it's not my objection to any plantings. It's just where they are and how they grow into other places you don't want them. And I would concur, the trees at the back of that property are in terrible condition, and I'm hoping actually to collaborate with the builder to get two down from my own property that are at the very back, because I have no access except through my neighbor's yards to get a tree removal back there. It's, as the property was built out my own before I bought it, the access to the backyard got narrower, and there's no way to get, like, heavy equipment in the backyard.
So you're saying that if he has to take down trees in the back, you would want him to allow your contractor, or you pay his contractor, to come into your property and take down those trees?
Or just collaborate, get those other two. They're, they're in bad shape, and they're down, we cut a few off of our property when we had those bad storms last year that came down from the Rebains. I think that was, that was it. I just hope, I don't know if it's this body or commissioners, think about the safety at the top of that hill. It's really become quite problematic.
Thank you. Anyone else? No, okay. Mr. Gallagher would like to ask a question.
Not to overstep, but I appreciate the board's time this evening, and just ask, if at all possible, I know there's a lot of commentary from Mr. Faulkner and Mike Cioco are going back and forth on that, and he feels that he can address all comments in a safe and timely manner. So we are under a time constraint with the seller, and we would ask if you felt comfortable tonight on approving it and sending us to the Board of Commissioners, at which point to the neighbors, maybe that would free us up to get the arborist out there and before any more inclement weather comes. So not to back into a corner, but I figured I would ask, I know Elston and Peach is a little bit more tricky of a situation, but that's all.
I appreciate the situation you're in. Unfortunately, this is the first time we've seen your plan. There's a significant number of comments, and the issues raised by some of the neighbors in regard to traffic and the waivers you're requesting for cartway width and sidewalks and things like that, I don't think it's fair to this board to ask us to decide that tonight. So I'm going to ask you to come back in February, similar to what we requested for your other project, address these comments, give us a reason why you think the waivers are appropriate, and give us some time to evaluate your requests.
Thank you.
Can I add one item? If you can jump on this, is it possible to put them on the 14th?
If.
Is that possible, Chuck?
You know, I mean, within reasonable time period, so we have a little time to take a look at it first. I don't know that a review letter is going to be able to be completed by then, but, I mean, if we could discuss the plans further, we can certainly put you tentatively on the agenda.
Okay. Mike will have it to you tomorrow. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
No, I think I'm.
And we save the best for last. Preliminary final minor subdivision plan for 217 Walnut Hill Lane.
Here's another one, if you all don't have them.
Herodora Properties LLC. I'm good, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Now they're going to know who's talking. Hey, Dennis O'Neal.
Good evening. My name is Dennis O'Neil. I'm with Herbert McComby's office. I'm here tonight with Mr. Grazio, who is the developer of the property before you. We're proposing to subdivide this 21,250 square foot parcel into two lots. The site's located along the southerly side of Walnut Hill Lane in an R5 zoning district, which permits single-family 5,000-square-foot lots. Lot One, which is the northerly lot on your plan, I'm sorry, the westerly lot downhill, is proposed to be 7,500 square feet, and it'll contain an existing single-family dwelling and the improvements associated with that dwelling. Lot Two is proposed to be 13,775 square feet, and there's proposed to be a new single-family dwelling on that house with its improvements. I want to note that currently, there is an existing sanitary sewer line which runs from Walnut Hill Lane through Lot Two to a sanitary sewer manhole at the rear of the lot. There's also sanitary sewer line which runs along the easterly, westerly property line to that same manhole. So as part of this plan, we're proposing to abandon that sewer line through that property, continue the line from the northerly side of Walnut Hill to the manhole to the west, and then allow it to flow down through, through the existing line, which is, which is off our property. Hydraulically, it all works. It's, it's, there's plenty of depth and cover there. I think it's just a matter, and we'll get into it with the comments, tweaking some of the details to satisfy the township. This lot is constrained. The rear half of both lots are steep slope and some very steep slope. The house is proposed to be located such that it doesn't fall within the steep or very steep slope. There is some steep and very steep slope disturbance within the permitted limits on the proposed dwelling to allow for silt fence during construction and the extension of rain gutter downspouts to the proposed seepage bed. Lot One's existing dwelling is non-conforming with respect to the side yard setback. There's a required eight-foot setback, and it is 7.12, I believe. The zoning hearing board on December 6th issued a variance to allow that nonconformity to continue so that we could move forward with the subdivision. And that is provided on the record plan, a copy of that approval. We are requesting several waivers, which are listed on the plan. We're requesting the minimum right-of-way width waiver, Section 165B 3J, which requires a 50-foot right-of-way and a 27-foot cartway. The existing right-of-way is 48 feet, and the existing cartway is 24 feet. Our sidewalks in front of the property, which we intend to maintain, we are requesting a waiver to allow a minor subdivision preliminary final. We're requesting waivers from street tree and tree replacement requirements. And the reason that we're asking this is twofold. One, along Walnut Hill Lane, there were a row of evergreens, arbiviti, they look like they may be even cedar, some cedars, but they've become very overgrown, they're overtaking the sidewalk. It's very difficult to traverse down that path. A lot of them are diseased and dying, so we're.
Oh, yeah.
When we appeared before the zoning hearing board, there was a neighbor who asked if the, if the site could be cleaned up, which we agreed to do at that time. And we just didn't want to be penalized for satisfying some of these requirements and have to provide additional trees. and have to, uh, provide additional trees, because some of them are, are good, some of them are bad, but it's, it's so hard to sort through and still provide a walkable, walkable sidewalk out front. So there's a number of trees that would come down in that, in that row as part of it. Uh, our other, our other issue and our other reason for the, for the waiver request is that we're trying to limit our disturbance through the steep and very steep slopes. So to go in and plant trees, maintain those trees and get them started viable growing would cause more disturbance of steep and very steep slope, which we're trying to eliminate. So we want to go to the Tree Commission. We want to work with the Tree Commission, um, and, uh, try to figure out how best to accomplish cleaning up this unsightly, um, site without having to, to do a lot of tree replacement, uh, for it. We're asking for the waiver. We're certainly willing to work with the Tree Commission to, to, uh, proceed that, should you see fit to give us a waiver, and even if it were conditioned with, uh, at the direction of the, or approval of the Tree Commission. We did receive the letter dated January 21st. Um, I can, uh, run through those comments with you. There's three zoning comments. One is that, that we were granted a waiver. Um, two, they're asking us to provide two off-street parking spaces. The existing driveway, uh, to the existing house only has one, and we're, we're willing to provide that, and, uh, we'll show that on a plan. Uh, three is that there's a proposed deck for the new house, and, uh, it says that it encroaches into the various steep slopes. Um, I'm of the opinion that it's a floor above the steep slopes. It's kind of cantilevered off the, off the house, um, but I'm willing to, to look at it from a zoning point of view with the zoning officer, and if necessary, we're looking to relocate it probably to the side of the house, so it'll be outside those steep slopes. Horizontal site distance, um, which was not shown on the plan, there is adequate, uh, site distance. Number five is the street light. Uh, although the plan doesn't show a waiver, uh, we'll, we'll probably request a waiver. There is this pole directly across the street from the proposed lot line, uh, Pico Pole with a street light on it. So there is a street light, uh, you know, in front of the lot across the street.
Yep.
It does show on street view. Approved planning module, uh, which we're in the process of obtaining approval from DEP. Uh, seven and eight and nine deal with the tree issues. Um, we, we are going to go to the Shade Tree Commission, try to work with them on those issues. Uh, 10, under stormwater management, um, um, Mr. Faulkner has a concern because of the placement of the seepage bed, which will be over top of where the existing, uh, sanitary sewer line will be removed. He's asking that we put in anti-seep collars around that portion of that pipe, which is to be remain, to remain, to be used for the lateral for the proposed house, and we will put those anti-seep collars in. Uh, we did, we did do perp test. Um, I believe that the tests were shown on the drainage area map, but we'll make sure they get on the grading plan. And, uh, inlet protection for the proposed yard drain. We will show on the ENS plan and, and the correct the typographical error that shows the basin at 4.5 feet instead of 5 feet. 15, 16 are standard. Uh, there's notes on the plans to cover that we need grading erosion control permits, and we need to pay our BMP fees. Under the general note, 17, a note should be added that the existing main, uh, will be converted to a lateral and will be the responsibility homeowners. We will put that note on there, and we'll revise the curb detail to show an eight-inch reveal rather than a six-inch reveal, although a lot of the curb out there is, uh, substandard curb. We'll revise the detail accordingly. Uh, there is a storm sewer line that crosses, uh, the northwest corner of the property, um, and we're not showing an easement currently. We'll add an easement to the, to the record plan for that and provide the legal description for that easement and have it recorded with the record plan. Comment 20, um, there's several comments there. They all deal with the relocation of the sanitary sewer and the methods of construction. Um, and we can comply with all of those comments. Uh, they're, they're, they're technical details, uh, of how this is going to, going to occur from a construction standpoint. So we can, we can comply with all of those comments. He's asked us in 21 to verify the existing inverts of, of one and two. We have been out there several times, uh, to take inverts. We've also looked at several old sewer maps, which we have in our office, um, and we believe that we have those inverts shown correctly, but we will go out and verify them one more time. So given the, the comments and the, the nature of the comments, in that there's no substantial, um, subdivision or, or stormwater issues with the plan, we think it's ready to be, uh, recommended for approval.
Any questions, Chuck? Jesse?
No, I'm good.
Chuck?
I'm good.
Mr. Rousseau?
Not really. Okay. I want to tell you the same thing I told the last applicant. I, I get concerned when we, we build, create a lot that, uh, potential homeowner has no ability to do anything in there, uh, because of the steep slopes. Okay, we're, we're utilizing all the, uh, level ground, so to speak, for the house and the seepage bed and driveways and things like that, so it becomes a little bit of a burden. But again, our ordinance doesn't say anything about it.
The only thing I would like to add is that this, that lot is extremely wide. So from, with the exception of a swimming pool, there is some usable yard space to the side of that house. You could put a swing set and, and amenities like that, and a deck and things like that in there, and still meet all the ordinances where you wouldn't be running to the, to the zoning hearing board, except for a pool because of the stormwater management.
Or a shed. Or a shed.
I think you could get a shed on there.
Yeah, if you put it over the old sewer line.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Um, I'd take a look at your limited disturbance. Um, I think you need to take into account the fact that you're taking down so many trees and the disturbance that's going to occur when you remove stumps and things like that, okay?
Yep.
Especially, I think there's a, a large tree, a 34-inch locust tree, right at the back corner of the, the house, and you have that trunk right on the limited disturbance, so. And I know you're pushing tight against the amount of disturbance you're allowed to do, but take a realistic look of what the disturbance limits will be. And I would suggest that if you're not going to do it, that you put up, uh, limited disturbance fencing to make sure that we keep within the limits that we're allowed to disturb. Um, it, it looks like the sanitary sewer relocation is going to cut across a driveway apron across the street?
Yes, that's correct.
Does that person know that this is going to happen? Have you talked to him about this?
We have not, no.
You have not?
No.
So he doesn't know that he's not going to have a use of his driveway for a period of time?
Uh, several hours.
Several hours? That's all? You're more optimistic than I am.
You notice, you know, a commissioner that's right across the street there.
In, in, in the construction world, for that line, you would trench box it, we'd have plates there. Um, so if, if that person needed to get in and out of their driveway, that contractor could stop, plate it, so that they could get in and out. It's, it's, it's a minor crossing at this point.
Are you, are you going to have to do bypass pumping then?
Yes, we are going to.
Okay, so you're going to set up that operation?
Yes.
You're going to have to rebuild the manhole?
Yeah.
Okay.
We don't have to open up that trench until we're at the driveway.
Yeah, but you're going to, you're going to start at the manhole that you have to rebuild, I assume, and work up hill, right? And then you've got to core into the existing manhole, and God only knows what kind of issues you're going to find when you start working there. I don't, I suspect that's not a reinforced concrete structure, it's probably brick.
No, it is. I appreciate your comment. I, I think that the driveway itself limit could, could be done now.
I think it would be a real good idea to let that neighbor know what's going to happen.
We will.
Um, do we have anyone in the audience that would like to speak?
My name's Leonard Arcini. I'm the 220 Walnut Hill. I'm the driveway.
You're the driveway?
First time I'm hearing about it.
The first time you're hearing about it?
Yeah.
Oh, play the game.
I know about this underground pipe and creek that goes across the street. I'm not sure what exactly you're talking about. They get up my side of the street, my driveway? I'm not really sure.
Your, your apron, where your driveway connects to the street is it, that's where they're going to rebuild this sewer line? So you're not going to have access to your driveway for a period of time yet to be determined?
Oh, you know, a day or two, a couple of hours, that's no big deal.
Okay.
That's not an issue.
Okay.
How much are they actually digging up? The sidewalk, the curb, and my driveway? I got a lot of bushes there. I got a lot of trees there. That's what I'm not following.
So we're, we're crossing the sidewalk from, there's a manhole in the sidewalk. We're crossing that sidewalk through the grass strip across the apron of your, this is the apron of your driveway. So it's manhole, manhole, it's...
On the property line. That's on our property line, yeah.
Yeah. So that, running across that driveway diagonally, underneath that storm sewer line, and then...
My apron of the driveway?
Yes.
Hold that redo?
We're going to redo it again for you.
Can you redo my driveway, Chuck?
I just had all curbs done, the apron done.
Should we be?
You're my neighbor, though.
We're required to reassemble the condition.
Question is, how long?
I did a 148.
He's on the corner, 100 corner.
Corner on the corner.
Block corner. 50 cats?
Well, that's going to be more than a couple days.
Yeah.
Probably more like a week or two.
Well, like they said, they, they're going to try to keep the trench as narrow as possible.
We planned it around vacation.
Yeah, wow. Maybe they'll pay for you to go on vacation. Uh, Dennis, seriously, when you go and replace these curbs and sidewalk sections, you, you got to make sure you take them down to the, the closest clean joint, okay? We don't want to see, you know, saw cuts and pieces of block that are...
I had mine done.
Yeah, well...
Cut any more than...
You, you show a nice straight cut line for that trench, but it's not going to happen that way. When you take up a block of concrete, you want to take up the whole block. You're not going to take up just a piece of it, okay? So...
We understand.
I'm going to say something else. I even did up to my neighbor's driveway. Oh, we have to hit driveway. I paid for it. I wanted it to look right.
You want to move in next to me?
I had to put all new floors in when I moved in.
Well, you know what I did then.
Yeah. All right, so you, uh, make sure you meet with this gentleman and, and make sure everybody's happy at the end of this reconstruction, okay?
Yes.
By my wire.
Pull your head.
I already have.
Mine's later. I'm the corner house, yellow corner house. Want to put some poles and poofy here? Stuff it with Christmas, sled with the reindeer.
I can put about 12 cores in there.
Not that.
I can put about eight cores in there.
Okay.
I have the biggest lot.
Um, is there anyone on the planning commission that has any comments beyond what we've already talked about?
No.
No.
I do have a, I do have a question about a line that's delineated on the drawing. Uh, there's a dashed dot line that's wrapping around the proposed building. I'm looking at the grading and improvements plan. This line here, wrapping around, and it's encroaching on the steep slopes, and then it's coming down here. What is that line signifying?
That is your tree protection zone, which is the 16-foot beyond the house.
Thank you. Dennis, I do have one comment in regards to the, uh, setback line for the existing We show it's eight feet. Building setback line for the existing house, side yard setback. You're, it's labeled on the title plan as being eight feet.
Yes.
Technically, it has to be nine feet in order to meet the aggregate side yard requirement of 16 feet. If you have 7.3 on the one side, you need at least nine on this side to meet the aggregate width.
Joe's nine feet, doesn't he?
We're granting a variance for the seven, three side yards.
You're granting a variance for the aggregate.
Well, we're providing 16 feet of aggregate setback.
No, no, you, you can't provide an aggregate if, if one is eight feet and the other is 7.3.
He's got a nine foot there.
That's existing.
That's existing.
And I'm saying that line has to be moved over a foot. The house is nine feet from the property line, right? And it's 7.3 feet on the other side.
So you'd like the setback shown at nine feet?
That's, well, I, not what I like, I think that's what's...
Oh, actually, it's 8.7 feet.
8.7 is, yes, to be accurate. 8.8. 7.2 is the minimum.
Okay.
Minor point. I'll, I'll make a recommendation that we, uh, recommend this preliminary final plan to the Board of Commissioners for approval. Subject to requirements, uh, subject to condition that the comments contained in the Bononi Review Letter of January 21st, 2019, be addressed to the satisfaction of the township, and that the side yard setback on lot one, um, that would be on the western side of lot one, be increased from eight foot to 8.8 feet.
I'll second that.
All right, we have a motion in a second. Uh, please, call roll, please.
Mr. Capuzzi?
Yes.
Mr. Fiore D'Amanda?
Yes.
Mr. Pointon?
Yes.
Mr. Riordan?
Yes.
Mr. Rousseau?
Yes.
Thank you. Merry Christmas.
I don't recall, I mean, minute, do we get minutes? I don't recall if we have December's minutes yet.
Okay, we have, uh, minutes to approve?
No.
No, no minutes to approve?
Not tonight.
Okay, so I think we're done.
Motion to approve?
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
We're gone.